To the Republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak at the open forum? One last time, is there anyone who would like to speak at the open forum? Okay, we'll close that. And I would just like to read the Leinster School Committee's statement. "The committee represents the needs of all Leinster public school students in places their interests about all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leinster." Okay, next item is Communications. And we don't want to be super intimate or anything. So, is there anyone, Ned, are you, is that Jim tonight, or no?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So Superintendent's report, we have none. Do we have a student?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh. Okay, okay, thank you. Microphone here, or? Welcome. You're our first student in a long time, so welcome. Oh, yes, yes, sorry.
Hi, my name's Yasmin Sid, I'm a senior at Leinster High School. And I have come to appreciate that Leinster High School is always busy. From sports to clubs, it's always filled with vibrance and energy throughout the school day, before, during, and after-school. There is never a dull moment at Leinster High School. One of the many things that makes LHS a breath of fresh air is its diversity in clubs and organizations. Although the school year has only just started, the past, the clubs at LHS have begun. Photography Club, Fishing Club, Anime Club, Psychology Club, Italian Club, Debate Club, Science Club, Acquarius Club, and that's only to list a few. Along with clubs coming with many opportunities to get involved. For example, just this past Tuesday, the youth venture at Leinster High School had a meeting to discuss the Fall Kickoff and much more. In the pursuit of that, the gift program with Dance for Gimmie Involved in Volunty Experiences just had their first big opportunity, which was the Scampro Festival at Shoreham Park. One of the great things about it is that there are so many chances to help within the community. One of the great things also about Leinster High School are the sports teams. Cross-country, golf, soccer, field hockey, volleyball, and of course football have all gotten to a great start. The after-school programs are a huge part of what makes LHS great, but during the school day, there's always something going on. Not too long ago, we had Spirit Week, which had a half-day, Hawaiian Day, Twin Day, USA Day, and of course Blue Monday. There's always a chance to get involved at Leinster High School during the school week. One of the great things that LHS displays on a daily basis is where it makes it such an honorary pleasure to attend high school every day.
How's mold day going up at the high school?
Mold day, it's just going, um, it's the 21st, I believe.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. On behalf of the superintendent and all of our schools, we wanted to bring your attention to the booklets that were placed as a gift on the table. The Historical Commission has rounded a program and expanded the historical walking tour for our third graders. They already have hosted Fall Bro, and this community will be hosting Francis Drake. All of our third graders have opportunity to come downtown. They have put this in a booklet together full of our history, and the students visit the different sites. So on behalf of the Historical Commission, we wanted to offer these books as a gift to our school community, and thank you.
Thank you. Now Gina, are you gonna stay up, are you gonna help us with the awards for our new teachers that?
I'd love those.
Okay, so next item is, um, this is an exciting night for school committee members because we welcome professional status for our teachers that have achieved three years or more. So Gina, I'll turn it over to you, and does everyone want to stick up?
What I would like to do is I would like the school committee to please join us now in honoring these wonderful teachers. Hope you'd like to come and stand over here. And the administrator for each school, as I called the recipient, if you could come and join us up here as well. This is a very exciting night. I welcome all friends and family that are here as well. Congratulations to each and every one of you. We thank you for your professionalism, your dedication, and your commitment to our students in Leinster, their families, our schools, and the community as a whole. We'd like to honor you tonight, presenting you with the Leinster Public Schools' apple. Wish I could say golden apple. But it's a showman farmer's. As I call your name, would you please come up, receive your apple, and then have the thank you from our distinguished community with you. Thank you very much, James. So the first one is Lauren Chikari. Hi, to you.
Congratulations.
From Fall Bro Elementary School, Caitlin Razzler. Caitlin Morgan and Shannon O'Donnell. Congratulations to all of the elementary, thank you. Francis Drake Elementary School, if you'd like the administrators to join us, please. Erin Champagne. We have Lauren Pelletaro and Shayla Works, please. Northwest Elementary, a distinguished administrator, please join us. Georgia Anderson. Also from Northwest School, Vanessa Blake, Kristen Formier. Samusette Middle School. Mrs. Drager, please join us. Alvin Quinn. Staggy Middle School. Brenda Amway. Jennifer Topbeer. And our previous administrators, thank you. Julie Bratson and Jennifer Sweet. And now we have CTEI Director, Daisy Adack, please join us. We do have one recipient that did not do business tonight, he's teaching. So I said, "Okay." But we would honor him by calling Kevin Palusia. We also have administrator from Leinster High, joining us. So the first recipient, Carlos Silva. Our last two recipients, Gregory Stifano, Christopher Estadio. I want to thank all of our administrators, and I also want to apologize for any name that I did not pronounce correctly. I did try. But now, I would like to give us one more round of applause for these wonderful recipients.
Debbie is going to go into recess, so we can have a little celebration for her. So congratulations, and I'm very excited for that. I think I may totally interrupt you, so congratulations. Okay, all in favor? Okay, so Debbie recessed, so please help yourself and congratulate all the new principals. Just like to introduce two administrators that we have in our district. Let's see, Sergio Perez is our new EGR. Okay, Sergio, you wanna stand up for the cameras?
Thank you, please. But I got five minutes to say, so I appreciate the fact that I'm here, back in the city, after being out nine years, and what a very timely time that we're celebrating our teachers. It's great to be here with our teachers, moving into the milestone, becoming tenure teachers. So it's great to be here, human resources, very important for our city, great for our community, very important for our future. We have had the best teachers in front of our kids, and it's great to be able to be part of that process. We have great leadership, great momentum in the city, so we're looking forward to contributing where I can, making human resources the best department we have in the district. Thank you, thank you very much.
Welcome, Sophia, thank you. We also have an interim finance director, and it's Glenn Fratto. Fratto, okay, Glenn, who wants to stand up?
I'm proud of the school committee for making the decision to bring me on board. Thank you, Glenn Fratto, I've been with the district, as of this morning. Already had one finance committee meeting, so I guess that doesn't buy fire. The people I've met in the administrative building, to a person, have a smile on them, and seem very dedicated to this, as does this community. And I'm very grateful they provided me this opportunity and challenge.
Well, welcome, welcome. Very excited to have those three here. Okay, next item on the agenda is Staggy Presentation, Tim?
I guess that's me.
I think so. So you have an overhead, so we should move.
It's the exact same ones you got in front of you, because you get paper copies, and it's in the package, so it's no different. So I'll just have it here, based on my reason. Just gonna show you that I'm still working on my level proficiency, just like my teachers, so. I guess right here. I don't need a podium, I wasn't looking for a podium. Make it easy, you can slip a question if you'd like. Whatever you want. So good evening, thank you. I enjoyed having this opportunity to present to you about some things that are going on in the school. I'm not gonna try to read at you each line, I'll try to elaborate on a few things. As we go through, you can kind of, the school committee can run an adoration, if you'd like to stop me a stop, answer questions along the way, we can have you do so. I think you've seen in this big crowd, you probably have a spot, my two assistant principals, we got Mr. Vigo right there, and Big Uncle. And Miss Waters would be like, "Van of mine, I'm here." All right. So, wanna show just how we're aligned with the District Improvement Plan? I know that is a probably gross oversimplification of the different objectives in the District Improvement Plan. Objective one, there's lots of things that have to do with curriculum, two is assessments, and three is tiered support. But I do know it's much more complicated than that. The School Improvement Plan here is that, so really for objective one, it's just really our efforts for the curriculum this year. And we're actually lucky to have wireless tonight. We've talked about it, I actually think, at the exact same time last year, about the wireless infrastructure being updated in the school. Since that is being done, our teachers now have the opportunity really to get into Google and to really add another engaging tool to their toolbox to help deliver engaging instruction to the kids. They wanted to have that technology go for about the past three years, and really now it's time to jump right into it. I've talked to you before about common assessments, and we're still working on those, and also our tiered support plans. So, within objective one, we have new science standards, I'm sure you'll hear about that over the next couple of years, because it would be difficult to really change the curriculum, okay, for twelve regarding science. The recommendation from Desi has been really to try to focus on one grade per year, so that will be six grades for us this year. We'd like to get more than one grade done, but we should probably do what Desi says, and at least try to get one grade done. We got a new curriculum product called Collections, that all my English teachers, my special education teachers, and other people who provide push and support receive training on just Friday of last week. So we're excited about that new curriculum product. We're excited that we have the technology to support it, and the differentiation that it provides the teachers to give to the kids is wonderful. So we're really excited to jump into the new product. So we're doing a complete new curriculum for Spanish and general music. And as I said before, that Google and the new technology is really another tool in the toolbox to deliver engaging instruction. If you wanna see what it's like to not have technology, come tomorrow, when basically the whole building is going dark. We'll take attendance, and that's about it for the day. We'll have no printers, no technology, the phones will be on, and that's it. As I told the teachers, you'll have phones and lights, and that's it. So tomorrow we'll be going dark. Objective two, continue with common assessments in all grade-level departments, that's ongoing work. Each year we get together and look at our common assessments, what students are showing us, where we need to improve our pedagogy and instruction. And that's based on teachers who teach the same things having the same assessments, so we get similar data from the kids. Objective three, for our Tierred Dimensions Project Lead the Way, which is the basically the engineering classes that you have at both middle schools. That's really fully implemented now for grades six through eight. That gives us besides foreign language, an additional enrichment that we can provide kids. So when we talk to kids about, "Do you have a chance to take an engineering class?", their eyes pop open, they get excited, to be honest. The teachers gave up a lot of their time in the summer, and they're excited. I'm not going to show it to you, because they'd be pretty mad at me, but it's a pretty cool thing to happen as a principal, when you have your science teachers texting you, "Look at us at our PD and what we're doing in the summer." And those aren't brand-new teachers, they're just, maybe this is what it's supposed to do with the class. These are veteran teachers that took time out of the summer that are really truly excited about what they're doing. All right, Deb? Looking at really how is, you know, we align what we do with the Desi Improvement Plan, how does that all line up? We'll get into Park Data a little bit for ELA and Math. I'm sure you'll probably hear a familiar theme as you go through the schools throughout the year. The Park Data is really being so new to us, I feel like for years we got the MCAS data, could talk about it, because it was the same test year after year after year. With the Park Data, it's a little bit more difficult, even though we've done Park for two years, it looked really different over the past two years. Science has been the same test, we've had an eight percent improvement in advanced proficiency over the past three years. So I think that's a slow but noticeable gain over the past three years, and our CPI is going up as well, if you look at it in the three-year scan. Yeah, we'll keep going. No, that's right. Nice job. For Park Data, for MCAS, we used to talk about really what's our advanced and proficient. And I think as school committee members, family, parents, kids, teachers, that seemed to be something we could talk about comfortably. It's not the same, but I tried to present it to you, as in Park four and five is really those top two levels. So, basically, what I tried to break it down for you is, it's not the same as advanced and proficient, but I think it would be a similar measure if we keep with Park and with the same levels. Then years to come, we'll be looking at kind of four, fours and fives that are doing really well, and what are we doing for our levels ones, twos, and threes in ELA and Math to continue to help them out. For growth, as you know, growth between forty and sixty percent is really where you want to be. If you look at any grade level over the past two years, we're really in that sweet spot of forty to sixty percent, and sometimes above it as well. So you see there are different situations between from year to year in growth, but I think even if you look at like, math, grade eight, seventy-six percent, that's fantastic. There's absolutely nothing wrong with sixty-three percent either. So we're happy we still have those, those good growth marks within our subjects.
So that means that's a percent that grew that year.
So Deb, you've been on the apex of this one. What I explain to my teachers, my parents, or anybody, if you're looking at growth, it's going from one year to the next, and it's a lot more complicated than that. What I always say is you want growth between forty and sixty percent. So we're there. That's way oversimplified, I know your math grade grounded like that, but.
So what they do is put children that scored into level three, that way you can get children that scored level three, stay in that group, and then you see where they grew to the next year. So wherever they went the next year is really a growth from one year to the other, because you can get children within that same group.
So these are cohort groups then, correct?
The levels, they keep them.
Right, so in other words, if we look at fifteen, grade six, that group for ELA moved to fifty-one in 2016? ELA fifteen was fifty-six, and that group moved up to grade seven, and now they're at fifty-one? So they're looking at? Grade seven, forty-four, now they're at?
No, you gotta go down. So if they're looking at just growth, it would be the next part down, so.
Right, so it'd be fifty-three, correct? Now that's the level, and the top growth is at the bottom? At the bottom, I guess, yeah. So sixty?
So this is where I say, like, if it was MCAS, I could probably give you like algorithms and things that you would be like, "Okay, Tim, that's way more than enough." And I'm not trying to oversimplify it to one. If you're at forty to sixty percent growth in any community, that's considered good growth, indicative that you're doing some good things. And I think then it becomes, how do you get behind the data, how do you look at what are those good things that you're doing that are causing kids to go from a level three to a level four, from a level one to a level two, from a level four to a level five? So, without trying to just kind of slough it off and move on, those are good growth numbers. If they weren't good growth numbers, I still show you this is exactly where we're at. But as I said at the beginning too, we don't talk about this, and I'll just put it on, with the same ease that we've talked about with MCAS in years past, because there was more data. We were more familiar with it, we were more comfortable with it, we were able to get behind the data, we have more details than we hardly part of.
Is there a panic number?
I don't think there's a panic number, if you're below forty percent, you're below forty percent. I mean, it is what it is, it's just, it's one benchmark, one indicator of things that are going on in the building. You know, this is just one data point, there's many other things that you can use.
Just to know?
I'd love to.
The grade six over there, ELA.
So you're looking at ELA, level fours and fives?
Yeah. You're going all the way across, grade six. Now, are there any projections, like, what does it project? Those numbers, first of all, grade six, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, are there any projections, how is it gonna appear in twenty seventeen? Likewise?
I mean, if you look at just grade six, as it did in cohort of kids, so we need to, if I was to make a projection, it was worth all our times, and we need to take all the kids that we inherited from Northwest, from J-Aim, and from Francis Drake, and combine those all up to try to make a projection of where they are. It could be done, I don't know what I'd be getting out of it for all the time that we're in for that. So, looking at the kids and what we need to do to help them. So last year we got a hundred and seventy-four alerts during the year. And that's a kid choosing to say, I'm going to tell, I want to tell Mr. Neeble this happened after school, here's a picture of it. We train kids how to do this because often kids will tell us things like, I don't like what this kid said to me, it wasn't nice. And we're able to reply back, thank you. If you could provide us a few more details of where I might be able to speak to this kid, that would be helpful and we can help make things easier for you. It sounds like I'm being silly, but sometimes when kids are in that moment of stress, they're not giving us all the details that they should. No different than when we tell a teacher, you find a fifteen one A, you do it with somebody next to you. Why? Because it's stressful, they're probably going to forget something, going to do it. So we get details, sometimes it takes a little while to get to the root of the problem. I've had conversations with the parents when they've been on social media monitoring their kids' progress and they see things and they don't know what to do with them. This gives parents an outlet to it. How do I know that they do it? Hi, Mr. Blake, I just saw this, I don't know what to do with them. What do I do? Well, you know that an anonymous alert thing? Oh, I'll take a screenshot and send it to you? Yes, and you will deal with it from there? Absolutely. Feel like it's being taken care of and taken care of seriously. But your job here as a parent is kind of offset and all that. So rather we do that. I know at first it was kind of, you know, what do you do if this happens at Saturday night at eleven thirty if a kid sends you those things? And those questions are difficult to answer and it's always specific of the time and what the kid says. But that's a hundred and seventy-four messages that I don't know if we can get all a hundred and seventy-four unless we did this. So it's something I think, I mean, our school loses, our school loses as well. We do train the kids like this is how you do it. Every time we train the kids, it's like a flood for the next couple of weeks.
Deb?
Yeah?
Question on that, I think that's a good, I think this is a good thing that you're doing with it. But how do you recognize that maybe some kids are sending you something that is erroneous? And.
I think it's really like.
To give back to the kid or give back, you know?
And I'll let Doug jump in with me, he's like, why are you doing this right now? But it's really no different than when you meet with a kid in person. And it's, you know, why, this question is kind of, why are you telling me this? We know usually, we can kind of figure out the subtle details, but it's really sometimes it's a touch and appeal and more to how are you dealing with kids and how do you respond to this situation? And then when you're addressing another kid, how do you address it with them? So the kids don't feel like this is a tool that makes Mr. Neeble go and get that kid or Mr. Blake has told us, so he's going to go do that. I feel pretty confidently, I think you'd agree too. The kids know this isn't like a robot or they go get the administrators to go do things for them. But it's just, it's a touch and appeal based on what kids say. And I think if you look at those numbers, a hundred and seventy-four alerts during last school year, you know, just as an estimate on it, probably two hundred and fifty total orders that came in. And a lot of those got needed out as not viable or not appropriate or not really a problem at all. So do we get some jokesters and some pranksters? Absolutely. We address that pretty openly with the students. We say, look, if you're sending us jokes, it keeps us from probably helping one of your friends who's dealing with something pretty important. And I think for the most part, the students get that. So yeah, we've seen some jokester ones. Sometimes they give us a little bit of a laugh once you look into it and realize it's a joke. I usually don't count those into our tools. I'll link those all together from the system so they don't get counted under those overhead numbers. So yeah, we certainly get them. And as Mr. Blake said, it's just like any kid coming to you. If they want to try to get you to go get somebody, they'll make a lie. It's our job to beat through it, to talk to other kids, to talk to those parents and make sure we're getting the right story. Because most times between two kids, the truth is somewhere in between. I think everybody realizes that. Once you really get used to working with these kids, we can find at least a model of the truth and help work out these struggles we go through.
Thank you.
Absolutely. That's right, some of them are interesting. I got one, Deb, don't be upset, I got one about long division and it wasn't the child's favorite thing to do in the life of the other day.
Oh, chocolate.
I know. That one came in anonymously, they didn't want to talk about it. So we move on to the next. Other kind of school district issues that we want to just bring to your attention still, we're still using Enginouby as our online foreign language program. I'm still very pleased that we use that. We've talked about the past, it's difficult to sustain a staff member for one second foreign language choice. Right now we've got five sections of online foreign language with five foreign language choices. A hundred and twenty-one kids in the older classes. So we just make it not just computer based. The Enginou staff works with Spanish teacher for similar academic endeavors. It's become part of the school each year now as we do like a foreign language week. But the teachers all get together also to collaborate on different projects and often will take time to work together. So we came here during the school day, for many of the days, we could see kids, actually now we've been being classrooms with the wireless upgrade, but you would see kids kind of searching for a signal in the hallway. Sometimes we don't see them in the hallway and they haven't disappeared, they're working within a classroom on non-computer basic aid destruction. Promotion retention policy, we really started that last year. Six students took and passed their summer courses through Enginouby. Eight students were retained in grade level and of those eight students for them over the first month of school are no longer enrolled in Winston Public Schools. So we really have four students that were retained in grade level. Eleven students were promoted to the next grade level that are currently taking a previous grade level class to complete promotion and hiring. So with all families that were somewhere in one of those bullets on the right hand side, the teacher did an excellent job of working with the families to try to not get to that point. I did not speak with one family going from kind of whatever choice it was going to be, whether it was you're going to be in grade seven but still take a grade six math class or you're going to take a summer school course. I never heard once the teachers haven't talked to me, the teachers haven't worked with me, the teachers haven't invited me, it was in fact always the opposite. Yes, I know, yes, I know, yes, I know, yes.